Do we have anything to report out of closed session?
No action to report this evening.
Alrighty, let's retake the roll, please.
Councilmember Altman.
Here.
Councilmember Greenow.
Here.
Councilmember Shalung.
Here.
Mayor Protemensgore.
Here.
Mayor Wright.
Here. And let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, its states and their, to the Republic which stands in station.
Let's go into the public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. All comments should be directed toward the entire council. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from the mayor, please state your name and city or county residency. For the record, public comment is limited to three minutes. The public is additionally allowed to three minutes each in which to speak on any item on the agenda prior to any action being taken by the council. Do we have any public comment?
Mayor, no hands raised.
Alrighty. Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it to the council for reporting out. Councilmember Altman.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Greenow. I don't have anything at this time.
Councilmember Shalung.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind everybody that this weekend, we're having a big cleanup at the Point of Honor by an amazing group of volunteers from the Donor Board Association of Realtors. And so I just wanted to publicly thank all of them. There's ten local Realtors and staff that are going to come out to donate their time Saturday at nine o'clock. So, thank you.
Mayor Protemensgore. I do not have anything either, so we have some ceremonial items. Just one, National Police Week proclamation, and I've asked Councilmember Greenow to read this.
Mayor, I'd like to thank you for the honor of reading this proclamation. I think it's really important that we keep those who serve us in our community and keep us safe on a daily basis. And those also who give their lives to keep our civilization, a civilization. Because without those who are willing to step in the line and between us and evil, we would have anarchy, so. This proclamation is very important. Whereas in nineteen sixty-two, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation designating May fifteenth as Peace Officer Memorial Day and a week in which the date falls as Police Week. On average, one law enforcement officer is killed in the line of duty in the United States every sixty-one hours. Since the first known line of duty death in seventeen ninety-one, more than twenty thousand US law enforcement officers have paid or made the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas in nineteen seventy-seven, the state of California stated, started holding a peace officer memorial ceremony at the state Capitol to honor the officers who had fallen in the line of duty in the preceding year, recognizing their sacrifice and impact and the impact on their family and friends left behind. California has lost six, one thousand six hundred and ninety-three officers who died in the line of duty. California has also lost forty-nine K-9 officers who also died in the line of duty-related deaths. And whereas in twenty-twenty-two, nationwide, two hundred and forty-six officers and twenty-five Canines died in the line of duty, protecting our country, our homes, our families, and our way of life, leaving behind their families and friends to carry on without them. In twenty-twenty-two, state of California lost twelve officers and four K-9 officers who died in the line of duty. And whereas, the city of Crescent City extends its condolences to the families of those who have fallen in the line of duty protecting us from evil. And now therefore, the city of Crescent City recognizes May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three as National Peace Officer Memorial Day. And city of Crescent City also recognizes the outstanding service of the Crescent City Police Department that they do for the city and wishes our officers a safe patrol each night and day when they go to protect our city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Well, I'll say this, I'll echo a few things I said at leading this year as kind of tie it in. We don't take lightly at all the support from the city council and our, everybody in the city. We understand that, what it comes at. The trust that we earn and will continue to earn through transparency and everything we're doing and higher training and more accountability. And every year, the somberness of this is just a reminder of those that lost their lives in doing this and toeing that line. So, I, even at the chief's conference, they play that every year and they have the chiefs and the, even the sheriffs that came up and talked about the people they lost, the family members they lost there, because that's what people are that serve with us. So it's, I thank you very much for taking the time to recognize this and to take time out of that and the comments that you make and just your ongoing support and your trust in what we're doing at the police department. It's not just me, it's everybody's buy-in, what we're doing for this community going forward. And in that, and echoing some of the comments from before was there's never been a better time to get involved in what we're doing as far as law enforcement wise. There's never been, if anybody's thinking about it or having questions about it, come out and do a ride along, come out and talk to us, ask questions. If you think at all you'd like to join, I, it's basically free agency, for lack of better terms, in California, there's so many jobs available. We're looking for good people, we're looking for individual leaders. It's not just the lead of the agency, so. In this, in that respect of honoring those that have lost their lives in this going forward, that's what we're going to need is people to step up and take their places and really be those leaders, so. Thank you again for your comments and, thank you.
Alrighty, let's move on over to our consent calendar. Item number two, council meeting minutes for May first, twenty-twenty-three. Item number three, warrants claim list for the period April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three through May fifth, twenty-twenty-three. Item number four, payroll report for May sixth, twenty-twenty-three, paid. May twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, number five, competitive permanent local housing allocation application by way of resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash thirty. Item number six, Valhalla Apartments Regulatory Agreement. Item number seven, purchase of utility truck budget amendment by way of resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash thirty-one. And item number eight, budget for use of RMAP funds for structural repairs to the equipment bay at the city courtyard by resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash thirty-two. Council, anything you want to pull?
Yeah, I'd like to pull number thirteen.
I move that we approve all of the consent calendar minus item number three.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Alrighty, can we get some public comment on item, on all the items minus number three on the consent calendar?
Mayor, no hands are raised.
Alrighty, I will close public comment. Can you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Altman.
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow.
Yes.
Councilmember Shalung.
Yes.
Mayor Protemensgore.
Yes.
Mayor Wright.
Yes. Alrighty, Ms. Shalung.
Item number three, just my regular recusal since some of the warrant claims often have a vendor or two that does business with BiCoastal Media.
Alrighty.
Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve of the consent item number three, the warrant claims list.
Second. Alright, let's take public comment on item number three on the consent calendar.
Mayor, no hands are raised.
Seeing no public comment, I'll close public comment and bring it back for a vote.
Councilmember Altman.
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow.
Yes.
Councilmember Shalung. Oh, sorry. Mayor Protemensgore.
Yes.
Mayor Wright.
Yes. Alrighty, we have no reports and presentations, no public hearings. We have an item on continuing business, item number nine, military equipment use policy, public meeting.
Okay, so this is just a continuation of what we did last time.
Yeah.
Has to go through that, so we've received, the annual report's been presented, it's been posted. We introduced the ordinance, and so now we're at the public meeting portion of this. Nothing has changed in it. It's all included in what's been available for a long time. I don't have anything to add to it or any presentation unless there's some questions that you have from last time, or if there's any comments or people have questions that are here or online.
Council, any questions? Alright, let's open it up to the public.
Mayor, no hands are raised.
Alrighty, seeing no public comment, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council by their motion or any further discussion.
Do we have a motion to make?
We don't need any action this evening as an opportunity that we're required to provide by law for the public to specifically come and ask questions and voice concerns.
Okay.
And we don't have anyone here this evening, so.
Alrighty. Then let's head over to menu business, item number ten, the Talawa Coastal Stories Project.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So yes, this is a very exciting project the city has going in partnership with the, with Talawa people and Talawa Cultural Committee and engagement from Talawa Dabie Nation, Talawa Nation as well as Elk Valley Ranch area. The project is, is really going well, and there's a lot of excitement on, on all sides. Sea Reach has been the primary consultant doing the engagement, so this project, this, the, the project has components that are funded by, by actually three different funding sources. And so the Talawa Cultural Committee is working on Beachfront Park and the new Talawa interpretive area that will span through, through Beachfront Park itself and tell the story of the Talawa people from the, from the start, the land sustainability, cultural values, all the way through settlement, colonization, atrocities that occurred there, and then really hitting the resilience part about a people that not only survived that, but are part of our culture today, and not only just surviving, but actually thriving. And so it's, it's really exciting to see this come to life. This agreement here is to award a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollar contract to Sea Reach, who is our interpretive planner for the Beachfront Park project, so that that part of telling the story was part of the Beachfront Park project. We also received additional funding from the California Endowment to make sure that we did it correctly. When talking to, to Sea Reach and Mayor Inscore was there, Mayor Protemensgore was there when we met with Sea Reach, and they said, look, you have an amazing opportunity here. But we actually need a little bit more. If you really want to do this right, we need to be able to sit down and really have the, the meetings in person to, to pull out what these stories are. What are we going to tell on our part? What is that, what does that look like? And so we went out, reached out to the California Endowment, they funded some additional meetings, so that's what we've been working on so far. Meanwhile, it takes a while to get the grants and the agreements all in place. We have the agreement, but they needed to approve the scope of work. We have the approval of the scope of work now, but it's still going to take three or four weeks to actually get everything signed and have the authorization to proceed for this coastal stories grant. This coastal stories grant is what's going to provide the filming of the tribal elders, the people that will actually tell the story. So when you go and you scan that QR code, you bring up that story as you're sitting in Beachfront Park through something that will not only just be a kiosk, but it'll actually be landscape, it'll be some sort of formation that actually tells that story as well. This is the video that you're going to see. This has been planned, we're hoping to have it all done by now, but it's, looks like it's going to be about another month or so until we actually get the agreement. Filming has been scheduled for June, and so we'd like to keep those dates. And so that's what's before you tonight, is we have verbal and email approval from the grant agency that yes, everything is good. You can go ahead and proceed. With, they will, they will recognize these expenses as, as reimbursable. We just can't get reimbursed until we actually have the signed agreement. So that's really what's before you tonight, is to approve an agreement with Sea Reach for a hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred dollars. And it'll be fully funded by the Coastal Stories Grant. We'll probably have to expend approximately about sixty-five thousand of that ahead of time. And then once the agreement actually gets signed, we'll get full reimbursement for it. But this will maybe allow us to keep our dates. There will be somewhat of an open house for, for the Talawa community that'll be held at the Colts Center, May thirty-first, in which they'll gather together to hear about the work that's been done by the committee so far and then be able to give their ideas, inputs, you know, tell stories to even further this, this opportunity that we have to really get that interpretive story.
Council, council, any questions?
Just had a quick question. I'm not sure if this is the right format to pose this question, but I've been asked by someone from the public, so I thought I told them I would follow up. But they asked, and the question was in relationship to the, the history being told in Beachfront Park of the Talawa, if there was going to be anything that would reflect on the history of, of our logging maritime and fishing.
Yeah, that is a good question and one that, that we have spoken about and is also part of the scope of work. And so the interpretive planner has been tasked with that as well.
Okay.
It's a much, I wouldn't say easier story to tell, but it's a different story to tell. We have a lot of that history, and so so the thought is right now you'd have along the, the beachfront side of things, that would be the Talawa interpretive trail as you're coming around. And then along the front street side, that's where we'll be able to tell the story of the, of the, even the surf hotel and the fishing and the mining and some of those things of our city's history and some of the history that happened from eighteen fifty-four, right, till present.
Thank you.
I, I just have to say I'm excited about this project, the fact that we're going to be telling as close to the whole story of our city and who we are and where we came from. I, I like this, and I, I look forward to seeing what comes of this. I think that this is going to be huge for our community to, to be able to go out and just, just read about who we are as people and where we came from. It's and honor those who came before us, that's, that's part of this too. So. I'm excited.
Good way of putting it, Councilmember.
I would move to approve and authorize the city manager to sign a professional services agreement with Sea Reach, Sea Reach Limited to implement the Talawa Coastal Stories Project.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion in a second. Can you give me some public comment, please?
Mayor, there are no hands raised.
Alright, seeing no public comment, I'll close public comment and please approve and authorize, please pull the vote.
Councilmember Altman.
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow.
Yes.
Councilmember Shalung.
Yes.
Mayor Protemensgore.
Yes.
Mayor Wright.
Sorry, I jumped ahead of you there.
It's all good, it's all good. Yes. Item number eleven, point of honor budget amendment.
Thank you, Mayor Wright, members of the council. So this was consensus direction from the council to bring this item back to the council. And it is a proposed budget amendment in the amount of of a thousand dollars, I believe is what we discussed. Reading this now, it looks like the with this, I did not write this staff report, and so what I assumed was actually in here, not quite the, the case. So this will be actually transferring the full amount to the general fund, it looks like. This, this lever, why don't you, why don't you educate us all on this one, apparently?
I happen to read the staff report, Mr. Weir.
Thank you, council. So yes, what is before you tonight is the budget amendment for the Point of Honor. So when the Veterans Monument Committee donated the monument to the city, they also donated a small fund for ongoing maintenance. It was just over twenty thousand dollars. And Councilmember Shalung pointed out that there, with the volunteer cleanup that's happening this weekend, we need a small budget to purchase supplies for that. And my thought was, let's just go ahead and budget the maintenance amount that we have, because we don't know what else may be needed. This money can only be used for the maintenance of this particular site, and so then it just rolls forward every year. Also, any donations that we get or the sales of the bricks also go into, they get added to this maintenance fund. And we'll just budget for it, and then if we need to replace flags or lights, there's going to be a cost associated with reinstalling the new monument for the MONG thing, monument, statue, monument. So any of those little costs that come up throughout the year, we will have the budget in place for it, and then, as I said, whatever is remaining each year plus donations, we'll just roll forward.
Are we still selling those bricks and how?
Yes, and I believe you just contact the city clerk.
Yes. Miss, you've got me starting, she was saying people call her Robin Patch still, and I, now I'm starting to call her that. Miss Altman has all of the forms and I walked her through how to purchase them through the vendor, and she has all of the paperwork from the past as well.
I'd, I'd like to like to re-advertise that we're doing this, is what I would say, because I think I didn't realize we're still selling bricks. I'm assuming most people would be the same, because I totally would buy one and put my family's name on it, so. Let's definitely re-advertise this.
That's a great idea.
Get another wave of bricks going, see if we can get a few, not just order, you know, one or two at a time.
Yeah, people are still reaching out to me and I just direct them to Robin. I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments on the list of things that you had to be eligible for use of the money. I would also add light and graffiti. I don't know if that matters, but that does happen. And then also, like, I don't know what you want to call it, but when people went down and vandalized, so maybe add vandalize vandalizing to the description. And then I wanted to ask about the status of the MONG insurance claim and what the difference in cost is, because I know there are some people in town that are willing to donate towards that difference in cost.
So I, I can speak to the cost to the city. I, I don't know what the final cost of the monument is going to be. Mr. Weir may know, I believe we have a quote now, but the city's deductible is a thousand dollars, which that's the part the city will have to cover, is a thousand dollars.
Oh, okay. I thought it was only going to cover the cost of the original monument.
And, and I think that's still a question, and so, Ms. Lee, I don't know if we've heard back from our insurance, so the, the original monument itself was estimated around seven thousand dollars, a little bit different design. This new design and cost have increased as well, but is, has a little bit larger base to it, and so it'll be a little bit more stable and anchored into the, into the concrete a little bit better, and it's estimated at just under twelve thousand. I was just talking to Director Yager about that. And so the question will be is, obviously it was, it was vandalized and will they replace it to try to replace it as, for this new monument in its full value, or will there be a difference that the city has? So, that is the, that's the question. But for sure, there will be a thousand dollar deductible, and then it's just that, that difference, so.
Well, I think the thousand dollars, you know, could, if that's all it is, I would, I would be in agreement for it to come out of the maintenance fund. But if it's substantially more than that, then I do know there, people have reached out that would like to help.
And I know flags have been donated in the past, and so, so far, we have not touched this money at all. Either there have been donations that have been made for the landscaping, so it could be something the council directs. Do we want to use these funds for anything associated with the Veterans Monument? Do we want to utilize parks funds to try to supplement this?
My, my personal opinion is that I don't think labor, you know, should be charged to this fund, because it would be eaten up very quickly. I think it should be for direct, direct expenses to keep the monument beautified and, you know, and to replace the flags. Things like that, any vandalism, you know, things that are going to cost, hopefully not very much.
I just, I think that in, in, in specific to the, the MONG monument, while I'm certainly supportive of, of replacing the monument, given the fact that we're talking about potentially a five thousand dollar difference in cost, I would just simply say that those are the, those types of decisions really need to come back to the council for, so we understand what's happening with that. As far as the ongoing maintenance, dealing with graffiti and/or whatever, I, I think that the fund is there, and I think that with working underneath your leadership, that, that those monies could be expended. But that, there is a significant difference in the original, and if we, if, if they only cover it to the original cost of seven thousand dollars and then take a, a, a thousand dollar deductible out of that, and this is twelve, we're talking about six thousand dollar cost, that, that depletes a, a large portion of that fund, and I think that we need to have a discussion about that before we just spend six thousand dollars out of the fund.
I mean, once all the funds are gone, are we going to stop taking care of the mon, the monument? No, I, I, I don't know, I guess I see, we're going to be taking care of this monument regardless if we have a, a dime in that it's just like our parks, we're not going to let our parks go to nothing. I mean, this is something that was gifted to us, we'll take care of it.
Yeah. I agree, and, and just for clarification, the entire time that the monument has been there, everything has been donated. There are so many organizations that love to go down and clean up. There are a handful of businesses that will pay for every flag that goes up there. So I don't see there ever being an issue with available funds.
But having this fund will allow us to put the money from the brick sales directly into this, and that's the only place that that money would go.
I guess my, my, my question is, is, is are we providing you direction because of the, the timeliness associated with the MONG memorial? Are we providing direction to, now that this fund is accessible in the general fund, to, to cover that cost?
Or are you going to be there this weekend?
Ah, so there's actually another economic development leadership group that's in town that's asked me to speak to them. I've been there every, every year in the past, but I don't know if I'll be able to be there this weekend. We will have somebody there.
I will be there. I will, I will plan on, plan to be there, but yes, you have always been there, thank you. Donating himself a lot of the supplies.
How, how would that work if we don't have a signer, somebody that can?
We'll, we'll be able to make sure we have the materials there purchased ahead of time, so this group has the supplies that they need.
Yeah, and they bring all of their own, you know, tools and, yeah, and there's going to be ten people, so it should go pretty fast, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would love to see us authorize the monument to get replaced. Jason Wiley has worked super hard with the MONG community to get it approved and redesigned. And the one that he actually fixed that looked pretty great is starting to degrade.
Yeah.
And he, you know, our goal is to make sure that, that, well, to hopefully make sure that's replaced before Veterans Day, which is November, but they're looking at a three to four month construction, completion of the monument once it's authorized to proceed, so. I mean, if nothing else, if you could, if the council's not in agreement to find out the particulars and bring it back to us at the next meeting.
We can certainly do that. The, the other option would be to authorize up to the six thousand. That's the, that's sort of the worst case.
Yeah, and I, I don't know if the MONG would like to donate. I believe they may even be interested in donating some of the difference. And I haven't got that confirmed, but I know that they spoke of that, and then also I have several business people that said if there's any need to let them know.
Yeah, I just, I just don't want us to leave this hanging, because I knew about the timing factor, so. If, 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 I, and I didn't know whether that would be appropriate for us to give that direction under this item. If not, that was sort of where I was going to, is that, that, that it needs to be back on at the meeting soon, so that we can give that authorization if it's not appropriate here, so that we're not pushing this further and further than even being ordered. So. It wasn't that I'm not supportive of doing it, I just want the process so we can get it done.
And I, I support getting it replaced as soon as possible, so I, if we have to shell out another five thousand dollars to get that done in a timely manner, I'm, I'm all for it. Personally.
City Attorney Rice, do we need to bring it back?
Well, yeah, if the council's going to give any specific direction or authorization, I want to bring it back and agendize it. Well, yeah, if the council's gonna give any specific direction or authorization, I want to bring it back and agendize it. But maybe we can just bring back a fuller picture at that time, too. So what the current status with? Funds and insurance.
Although tonight's action, I believe, authorizes the city manager to make this decision.
It would authorize twenty thousand dollars to go into the federal fund for the maintenance of the, of the monument itself, but.
Normally he would have authority to make decisions of expenditures of that size, yes.
And I, and if, if that's the way you want to proceed, I can try to get more um, communication from the Monge group on what their. Um, desire is as far as the financial end of it.
Yeah, we can, we can find us more information on the insurance side. We can find out more information on the, uh, as far as the Monge leadership goes. Then we can bring this. We will be having a special meeting and it looks like a week from tonight to discuss Front Street. Might be a good time to bring this back. I know how important this item is to the council and so giving the council the information you need. Uh, to show your support for this, uh, I think is also pretty important. So if we can do, as long as we do it timely, which I think we can.
Great.
Sounds good. Let's, it's another further council discussion. Let's do public comments.
No hands are raised, Mayor.
All right, let's, uh, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the council.
I move that we approve and adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City managing the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, please pull the vote.
Councilmember Altman?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem and Score?
Yes.
You're right.
Yes. Alrighty, item number twelve, City Representative for the Sister City mural presentation in Rikuzan, Dakota, Japan.
Thank you, Mayor Wright, members of the council. We'll give you an update from our, uh, from our last meeting last week. And where the council gave us direction to spend up to uh, four thousand dollars to ship the mural to uh, Rikuzan Takada. Uh, for their, uh, for their celebration that they're planning in, uh, in late June. Uh, I believe are the, the dates that they're planning on receiving this. It is quite the process. We talked about, uh, trying to get it there. So it'd be, uh, transported down to the Bay Area and from the Bay Area on a ship which could take up to forty-six days. Uh, Supervisor Howard was, was also working, uh, on this, uh, particular project, Air Pro Tim and Score as well. And, uh, the shipment was paid for today, actually, and it was less than two thousand dollars. Uh, so it came in well, uh, below the, the estimate. Uh, the weight was still a, a major factor, but with the type of crating, I think that played a big role into the actual cost of it, so. Uh, so that was, uh, good news on that side of things. However, they, uh, they, being our sister city, have planned a fairly large celebration, it sounds like, for this. This is a big deal to them, just as it was to us and to receive, uh, something like this. And so the Kamome, uh, Foundation has, uh, agreed to pay for, uh, Mayor, uh, Pro Tim and Score's, uh, travel. To the, uh, to the, uh, to the event. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, uh, Mayor, or the plane ticket.
Yeah.
Uh, plane ticket, uh, only to the, uh, to the event. And so what's before you tonight is to authorize Mayor Pro Tem, uh, Inscore to be the official city representative, uh, when that mural arrives. Uh, and for the celebration by Rikuzan Takada.
Only if he gives the entire speech in Japanese. Alright, um, council, any questions? Comments?
Uh, makes sense to me. Blake has been, you know, a huge part of this since day one, um, and so I'm supportive of that. I. What makes up the Kamome Foundation?
It's a nonprofit. It's a nonprofit that we formed, we started in two thousand. Twenty-one, yes, but we did get our official nonprofit status until this, this year. But it exists to.
To further the efforts of the, of the Sister City. One of the things that we heard repeatedly during the time. When there were people who were speaking against using the public funds is that there should be a nonprofit that takes the lead on this Sister City. Uh, relationship and, uh, so we, we worked to try to establish that and we're. We're in the process of, uh, looking at expanding, expanding that board beyond the original founding board members. Which was Bill Stephen, uh, Jeff Harris, Chris Howard and myself, uh, to, uh, to. To community members and then ha- begin handing, handing some of this work off. Obviously, we have some momentum again now with the mural. Uh, we, we, the, uh, the Kamome Festival and the evening program. Generated some very, uh, good interest with the communities and people who indicated that they, uh, they want to go to Japan. They want to discover who the city is. We need to, we need to bless those people, need to capture those people. I think that, that because of the nature of how things work in city government in, in Rikuzan Takada. There will always be some government to government stuff because that's who drives it for them. It's part of how they're, they're set up. But the, the stronger a local nonprofit is, the better it's gonna be for all of us. Uh, I think there'll be a place for the city always to have, um, but a nonprofit, I think. Can do some things that, that we simply, um, struggle to do, so.
And so this would be at no cost to the city for, for this.
Well, I'd like to thank, uh, Mayor Pro Tem and Score for taking some time out of his month and going and honoring our friends with his presence. Um, I know it's a big commitment. But it's, it, I'm excited that, that we are able to bless our friends in Rikuzan Takada with the same mural that we have here in Crescent City. Further, furthering the bond that we share with them, so.
Now, it's just a matter of, it, it, it's in Oakland, it's ready to go next ship that's, that goes. They go twice a week or something like that, so it actually takes about seven days to get across. The, 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 the window that we were given for the forty-six days is because of, of, uh, potential customs issues. So that when they quote things, uh, hopefully this won't be a customs, uh, issue and it'll be there in plenty of time. But, uh, Mr. Weir, something that, that I had mentioned to you and, and Mr. Howard reminded me again today. I think it would be good for the city as, just as a, as a gift type of thing to at least explore. Um, a good high resolution picture, something that we can take as copies of the mural that exists here. Um, so that if, you know, the unforeseen circumstance, that that mural is not there when we have the celebration. That we have copies of the, you know, color picture of the, our mural, which is, is the same thing to give as gifts to the. The council members there, so they. I don't want to be standing in front of them giving a speech and I have a darn thing to give them. And I can't control whether or not this thing gets on that cargo ships and gets there on time. We, I mean, we are, we are really cutting this close now. I mean, it's fifteenth of May and the celebration is the twenty-eighth of June, so. But I don't, you know, I don't know that there's a lot of cost associated that. I know that it's, it necessarily, we'll have another meeting. But if, if we could do some, look at doing that, I think there's eighteen members on their city council.
So that's a lot of members, that's, I couldn't imagine trying to get eighteen people or, I guess, majority of people to agree on anything, but okay, that's good.
So, um, as far as those, uh, printouts, those gifts, do, do we want to use some of the allocated funding from? Our, uh, Sister City budget for that or?
And if, if that's consensus direction, we can look into the cost, figure what the frames would be, how we're going to ship those there. Because, you know, eighteen is, is different than taking one picture with you.
Yeah, I was thinking of them.
Did you roll them in tubes and then he could frame them when he gets there?
Yeah, and, and I wasn't even necessarily thinking of framing. I was thinking of them being in portfolios like what we do with a proclamation. As long as it's a nice, good quality print and put it in there and then we, I can pack all those.
Oh, yeah.
Then the cost.
Maybe just do a large, one large, like a twenty-four by thirty-six in a tube. You could get printed, film at office or whatever, but.
Yeah, if you could look into that, that, that might be, that, that would be a good, uh, demonstration problem. Or while, when, when, when I speak and then they can hand them out to all of them or something, maybe.
And then just maybe be able to grab a, a cheap twenty-four by thirty-six frame. You can get them even Walmart, but I don't know what to have over there, but, um, when you're there.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's extremely forward thinking. Yes, yeah, I would hate for him to be there empty handed.
Can I make a quick suggestion on that, Mr. Weir? Um, if, I know Mr. Blake and Mr. Inscore already been in my office, you've seen the, the framed lighthouse photo that's there. Uh, our own VIP volunteer policing, uh, Gloria Boebert's crow, she's the one that took that. She's a, I guess, semi-professional, more professional photographer, and then her husband makes those custom frames also. If you'd like, I can ask her, I'm pretty sure she'd volunteer services and do, do what you're asking, or at least meet you down there, everybody down there. She does an excellent job. She takes really good photographs and then the custom frames they do, if you want to do one frame or whatever, which she probably even donated, so.
Yeah.
Um, I know she's.
He just doesn't really want to ship a frame.
Right, but you were talking about taking prints and so definitely I've had, is it the office that we've done that exact same thing between her or even one of the local district attorneys? That's, they've taken those prints and that's what we've had blown up to kind of have that little breakup of the, the walls, all those photographs that was taken locally, so. That, that just came to my brain when you guys were talking about it, so.
Honestly, I'd even be fine with shipping one frame. It's just gonna be one big one. I mean, that's, I don't know. I think that'd be something cool to even add on top of it in general, but yeah, I don't know.
Sounds like we have support and we have adequate budget, so we'll, uh, we will get it figured out.
Sorry, did we make a motion for that?
No, you were, I was gonna wait for you to do comment this time.
Let's, um, let's do public comments.
Mayor, no hands are raised.
Alrighty, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for a motion.
I authorize Mayor Pro Tem Blake and Score to serve as our city representative for the presentation of the Sister City mural in. Rikuzan, Rikuzan Takada, Japan.
Second. Alright, I have a motion and a second, please pull the vote.
Councilmember Altman?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem and Score?
Yes.
You're right.
Yes. Alrighty. Um, legislative matters?
Nothing pressing, but I'm aware.
City manager report, city council directives.
So, as you know, some of the council is aware and some of the community might have, uh, seen Public Works crews out and about off Pacific Avenue today. Uh, we do have a, or it's actually in the county, the county CSA does have a sewer lift station. Problem and it's a fairly major one regarding the lift station itself. And so the community should be aware that there is a temporary bypass company that will be installing some pumps, hopefully, uh, as soon as tomorrow. Uh, which means that we will need to close, I believe it is, uh, Enyo, correct? Uh, Director Yeager is, we're coming across, coming across. So Enyo Avenue, just north of Pacific, uh, will need to be closed. There'll be a slight detour around, uh, to get traffic around. It's just gonna be for the one block, but there will be an overland, uh, sewer bypass that will be installed until we can get the, uh, the issue. Really determine what it is and then, and then get it fixed. Because at this point in time, the lift station is, uh, is submerged and so that'll be our first order of operation is to find out exactly what's going on. What equipment's working, what equipment is not, and then get it repaired. So that is an, an update there that came to light, uh, yesterday evening. And so hats off to the Public Works Crew for, uh, going out, especially on, uh, on Mother's Day, taking care of that. Uh, we had crews out throughout the night and we will have crews out again tonight, not only dealing with that, but there is, uh, the planned power outage. So a reminder to, uh, to all on that one, uh, scheduled for ten o'clock tonight and I believe through two AM if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. So something to be aware of on that one. Uh, speaking of community cleanups, I do want to thank the downtown divas and those that came out, uh. Not this last Sunday, but the Sunday before that on May seventh, cleaned up the farmer's market area, getting ready for farmer's market and the kickoff of summer season. So great job to them, a lot of, a lot of hard work on that one. Uh, Front Street, so we set to the council, I believe we're going to have a special meeting on, uh, on this coming Monday, a week from tonight. Uh, is the plan, so we're still working on the nuances of the various funding, uh, components of that. But the, uh, the requested action will be to authorize the, uh, the base bid to, uh, to Tidewater. So as long as we get confirmation from the council, that meeting will be a week from today. Uh, the healthcare district, uh, we give them our funding request, uh, letter. So that'll be a funding request for the pool services that they, uh, that they have been funding for the past couple of years. So that's swimming lessons, uh, that's recreation swim on Saturdays and that's, uh, senior passes, uh, on a monthly basis to our community. And so I give them that letter, uh, today as well as requesting additional funding for Beachfront Park. And that was in the tune of additional funding for the bike park, additional funding for the, uh, the exercise, uh, areas. That would go around Beachfront Park as part of the one mile loop. And then the option to fund, uh, accessible ADA surfacing for the existing Kid Town, uh, playground. I can't imagine they would fund them all, but I wanted to give them all the options so they could look at what they thought would, uh, best benefit. Uh, the community from the health district standpoint. So those who submitted today, they'll be voting on that, uh, next Tuesday, so May twenty-third on that side of things. As council knows, we, staff has been, uh, caught up in lots of budgets and so just want to thank you for all of your time last week. I think it was over nine hours of budget meetings in the span of two days. And we have some really good direction, so just think, uh, thank you guys for, uh, all of your time and effort and going through that with us. And last but not least, Forest Moon Festival, just keep it on your radar. It is, uh, there's a great group, uh, people helping, uh, work on that and planning it. And, uh, I think it's gonna be a lot of fun, so that is June second. Uh, and, uh, for the first part of it, which will be the showing of Return of the Jedi in Beachfront Park. A lot of the businesses, I think, are participating in the first, uh, first Friday event leading up to that, and then you can go watch the, the movie in the park. And then on Saturday from noon to five, uh, will be the, uh, the festival that the city is putting on. So Ashley Taylor has been out, she started this, and then there's been a, a group of people that have picked up the ball, including Sunny Valero. And we have Angela Greenow and a group of volunteers. It should be a lot of fun for kids of all ages, really. There'll be lightsaber making and bands and our local high school band's going to play and it'll be a good time. Well, yeah, I've. That, that is very significant and so it's, that's the one thing that's a little bit hard to plan is we don't know if there's going to be three hundred people, you know, at this event. Which would be, uh, you know, a good event, or there's going to be a thousand people or fifteen hundred people. And so we're, we have porta potties coming, we are, uh, we do have trash, uh, service that will be there. And we're trying to plan it so it can expand and contract to, uh, to accommodate.
Yep, I, I came tonight with my Mandalorian tie. So I'm, I'm, I'm supporting our, our Forest Moon Festival and I'm, I'm, I'm behind it. I'm excited. I took the ti- the day off or two days off for the festival and I, I look forward to seeing what you guys have planned for us.
It, it should, it should be fun and so definitely for parents that are out there, there will be the, uh, the Rebel Challenge. And that'll consist of approximately nine different, uh, events or obstacles that they have to, uh, to qualify for. And they'll have their, their, their ticket and if they punch all nine, I believe they become a Rebel, uh, general, I think, is the, the official title. And if they only get through a couple, then they're Rebel leaders or they're Rebel commanders. Should be, uh, should be fun, or, uh, Mayor Pro Tem and Score will be, uh, assisting as well on the mic, so it should be, uh, it should be a good time.
Okay, I would just like to say that the empire is just misunderstood, you guys. There's really.
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with just a little bit of order, right?
Sorry, it gets under my skin a little bit when people's, sorry. We'll, we'll, we'll leave it, we'll leave it.
Council, anything else? The only other thing is Chief Griffin, do you want to give a quick report on the tip of cop? I don't know how that went.
Uh, yeah, there's over, I mean, it's about, it was over two thousand dollars, I think it was generated through that, through different funds of that. Um, the only cost of it would be the cost of the T-shirts, which would, um, ongoing, I think it's just over seven hundred dollars they paid for the T-shirts. But we have those for future events also and ongoing support, but it's very well, um, attended, uh, great reviews on it. Looking at maybe a little bit different next year, kind of two different events, because it kind of got mixed in between with some of the events that were going on with some music and this and just the atmosphere. But everybody loved it and it was really good, um, so. And then just a reminder for this weekend also, we do have the coffee with the cop event. Uh, Paragon Coffee, uh, from eight AM to ten AM, uh, it's copied the chief and the sheriff, so. Uh, I was just having, actually having coffee with the sheriff there today, so talking about how things were gonna go, so please come out and bring your questions or just, let's talk.
The, uh, remind everybody, I didn't. The, uh, remind everybody, I didn't mention this earlier, but we have Memorial Day coming up. And so if the, anybody in the community is interested in volunteering, um, we have, you know, our, our veterans, uh, group is small, that actually goes out to the cemetery. But on May twenty-seventh at ten AM, they'll be putting flags out on every, um, veteran's, uh, headstone. And it's a lot. There are, it's a very substantial number. Um, and then on May twenty-ninth on Memorial Day at ten AM, they'll have a service. And then on May thirtieth at ten AM, they'll be picking up the flag. So if any of those work into your schedule and you'd like to volunteer, I mean, it'd be great just to show up. They could really use the help.
If there's nothing else, I will adjourn us till the next, uh, regular meeting of the city council, the city of Crescent City, Monday.
May twenty-second?
Well, it's not confirmed yet.
Oh.
So, yeah, Monday, June fifth, twenty twenty-three at six PM right here at the Flynn Center, unless we have a special one. It's Monday. Very good. Thank you.